...of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People of the agenda, there is one thing to amend. Under Mayor, Mayor Council member reports, number four, standing committee's appointments for 2023. And here I move that we accept the amended agenda.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of a regular meeting on Tuesday, January 3rd.
I hope we approve those minutes, ma'am.
I said, yeah, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have any nominations for your commission?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one. I have a very young man. His name is Carson Buck. And he has taken over one of the older dills buildings on West Main, 911 West Main. And his company is called Wild Auto Care. And he's doing a real good remodel on the front of that building, the face of right across from the CLT floor government. And he's doing a real nice job on the inside. And he's going to be doing things like window tinting. He does detailing of cars. He's gonna do, um, he explained something that you take the dents out of a car. But there was some kind of a, it's one of those processes I did not understand. Anyway, he's a wonderful young man. He's doing a great job. He did buy the building and he is making an investment in our city.
That's interesting.
His phone number is 941-1222. He should need your car detailed after all this street system. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other nominations? We have no certificates to hand up today. Citizens Business in Writing, Apex Mechanical LLC, application for filing an electrical license. The Bonfire Requested Apology, Electrical Contractors License, all fees have been paid, copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for 2023. Contractors License is Electrical and Plumbing, Apex Mechanical. Master Plumbing is Justin Strong. Journeyman plumber is Josh Boyer and James Burman. And Electrical Master Electrician, Apprentice Electrician is Aaron Coverman and Adam Baumberger, Toby Bussler.
I'm going to make a motion to be approved, application for plumbing license for Apex Mechanical LLC.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in Writing, number two, Melissa Hay, Sewer Forgiveness. Date of January 10th, 2023, City of Newcastle. To whom it may concern, we have had a high water bill, Wild West Rentals account number 1295-000 for the last several months. And finally found the water leak. It has been leaking under our building outlaw motors into the swamp behind us. We have fixed the leak as of Thursday, January 5th, 2023. We are asking for sewer forgiveness during this time. We appreciate you looking into this for us. Thank you, Melissa Hay.
You know, I moved to give this sewer forgiveness, and this is another good business in our city and good people. And I think we can, and if you have a problem like this in the middle, why don't you need a break?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Questions? Yes. Where I see is the 2021 October, November, December sewer forgiveness. That goes back into October '22, November, December. So is there a reason why they had sewer leak between, or a water leak between October 2021? Wouldn't there be January to October added to this?
Donnie, those are just our office calculations to try to compare the '21 to the '22 usage. And then we kind of came up with that difference to figure out what amount should actually be.
Okay, so 2021, when you put this on here, basically they were running out for that three-month period, okay? So we're not looking at this to give sewer forgiveness for over two years.
Oh, no.
Okay.
We just have one number.
The forgiveness is for the amount of water in the building.
That was my one question.
Any other discussion?
The water wasn't actually going in the sewer?
Yes, we found it. Actually, they found it. We went and looked at it and investigated and it was running in the creek behind their building.
Okay, so they weren't actually using the sewer?
Nope.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business, um, volunteer care. So we'll go to third ball, James Carrick, Volunteer Fire Department elections.
Hello. We had our elections last week for the fire department. I retained chief, Chris Kenny retained his assistant chief, Al Laitel retained his secretary, and Corey Horn was Lord in his department secretary. We ended up with about 151 calls last year. That's all I got. Very much. Thank you.
Who was the secretary?
Uh, Corey Horn.
Horn?
Horn?
Horn.
Mike Horn? Horn.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Citizens Business Global Brand Group. All congratulations.
Hello. I just want to talk to you for a moment about the cemetery. And I don't know when the requirement that you have that being evolved happened. But my husband died before that requirement happened. And he is now buried in a pine casket, which is what I was hoping to also be buried beside him. And my great-grandfather, Jess Freel, bought a plot in that cemetery 10 years ago with 10 spaces, 10 casket spaces, whatever you want to call them, plots. And right now, there's still three left. And he, when he bought it, I mean, it was a pretty new cemetery. And now that's in what they call the old part of the cemetery. And it's like, oh, the handsome Freel plot. And, you know, my great-grandfather, Jess Freel, who bought the plots, was pretty famous for killing his own uncle in Lane Street in front of the antlers. You know, because his uncle, you know, needed killing. And, you know, he's kind of a character from this town. And he's buried there. He bought this plot. And suddenly, whoever goes in there now has to be in a vault. And, you know, I know it wasn't suddenly. It's been a few years, I suppose. I don't know how long. Because I wasn't paying attention until, you know, my doctor wanted me to do one of those forms and I started looking at stuff. And, you know, there's room for me, my present husband, and my son still in this plot. And I think bodies should be able to go back to the earth. Ashes to ashes, dust to dust. Have you heard that before? Okay, well, when you put them in a cement vault, they can't do that. So I'm objecting to that requirement. And, you know, I know you're not going to change it just for me. But maybe you could make an exception for plots that are older than anybody knows. You know, that are in the old part of the cemetery. That the other people buried in those plots, and those 10 plots that he bought. He bought two more for his sister, decided. I don't know why she got two, but she did. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say is I don't like that. And if there's anything I can do to change it, I will. Or if there's anything you can do to change it, I wish you would. Because someday, I'm gonna die. And, you know, I'm 72, so might not be very long. And, you know, if you have to sneak up there and all night dig it up and bury my body without all that stuff, I'm gonna do it. And then they'll have to dig me up to move me. But anyway, that's how I feel about it.
Well, I can appreciate you sharing the feelings with us. I'm thinking that maybe the cemetery committee could look in regards to this and go over all the requirements that there is now and when it changes and all of that.
Yeah, but he said, Manuel said that it's because like the, or maybe partly because anyway, the people keep wanting to be moved. And when they go to move them, there's nothing left because they went back to the earth. So, you know, they try to move them. It's hard to move dirt and ash that's together. And so, you know, they figured, you know, must have been, seemed like it was neater to have them in a nice vault. They could dig up and carry away somewhere, wherever. But, you know, this is an old family cemetery plot. Nobody's digging anybody up here. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to apologize and step back a minute and make a severe motion to accept the positions of the fire department. Oh, I'm not sure where it's located.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations. I'm sorry about that. Moving on to Mayor Council member reports, application for zoning amendment. Can I just step back? Madam Mayor, are we going to take care of that then? Are we going to? I mean, we'll have the committee meeting. But I just so she knows that we're gonna move forward. We'll have the committee meeting once they report it back to the council. We'll get in touch with you. So we all have the application for zoning amendment? Do you all have that? Yes. So the reason for this amendment was given in nature of the amendment, a zone change or correct to zoning map. To rezone bacon lots 11, 12, and 13 off Stampede Street and next to Cambria Community Baptist Church for residential zoning to commercial zoning. Reason for the amendment is to develop the property into a 24-hour regen fitness center.
Presently, it's all one. It's residential.
It's existing zone is residential.
Yep. Do we have any information, anything from the people who live in these houses up to on the street next to it?
I guess that's where I'd go with it.
Okay.
So, yeah, Mr. Foy got signatures for everyone that lives around that property. It's on your second page.
Could you state your name, please?
Adam Farland, Philly Inspector for City Hall.
Okay, so they did approve, the residents around it, it sounds all right.
Yep.
Another question I have is, uh, it says time schedule for development is six months depending on the amount of time to secure a small business loan and contractor. So do we want to change the zoning of the property before we can even see if they can secure a small business loan to build the building?
Could we do it in contention of that? You know, which is...
So his thought was before going forward with this was to be sure he did visit that zone before he purchased it. Otherwise, it would just be a waste of money on his end and everybody else's. So he's just kind of putting it out there.
Again, I see like, I understand his position. But why are you zoning something unless we know for a fact that he could secure the loan to build the building?
If all else fails, we could just resort back.
We go through the process of getting, making sure he's qualified for the loan and get that approved, not actually signing the paper for the loan. And then know that he's got the financing in the back and then come back and make sure.
Does the law put the loan, specifically, we need to be known as for the loan? Sometimes we go through a loan, we not show it.
Yeah, usually, you know, a small business loan, you know, you'd have to be by the commercial law. So I can get him on the phone if you guys have questions for him. I just kind of, he wasn't able to make it here, so.
Yeah. It would have to be done correctly for the property. I mean, I'm not a banker.
Well, and then you, we have the signatures of all of the neighbors in the area. Or just the neighbors? All the neighbors?
He didn't get, he did not get like the, uh, his church. About these ones and then the ones that live over here on the side. That one he was going to get hold of because it passed. We got Moses for himself. So it's just the side. I'm just trying to sell.
Thanks, Tom.
Did we do something similar to with 21 electric when you built that building and we went back?
That, Aggers, Aggers was rezoned as well. You had 21 electric was rezoned, that kind of thing, so.
Almost kind of the same way with Councilman Owens is, you know, you know, if I was able to show that I could get the loan for the project I wanted to do and then I could come in and say, hey, I'm ready to do this, not connect it, rezoned, obviously, not committed to my loan.
Yeah.
But at least I've been pre-approved and qualified.
It just seems like that would just in good faith, show that he could.
Maybe on the phone, see if he's pre-approved, pre-approved or not.
Would it help him if the mayor signed a letter that says, give me a hint that you do qualify for your loan. We will rezone your property. That should help, that should.
Well, I don't know if we have a consensus of the council to rezone the property. I mean, I'm comfortable with rezoning it personally.
I am too. It's sat there for a long time for sale without it moving or doing anything.
We signed it across the street. I mean, that's pretty commercial.
I think this is going to be a very positive thing for our town.
Yeah. But do we want to change it to commercial before it gets approved? Because if he doesn't get approved, then.
That's what we said.
We don't want anybody moving some undesirable.
Stuff in there.
Commercial building in there.
If he gets approved, he has stuff, then the mayor will have the letter that we consented to.
We can write him the letter if we did.
Isn't there, isn't there a right one? I mean, just for him.
For him. And we did that? Did you hear that, Donnie?
Did you hear that?
Are you guys saying that you would sign a letter together, basically saying that, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Basically saying, or he's telling the bank, giving them notice that it would be rezoned to CP under the circumstances as to say that if he were to get a loan, prior business loan, then you'd give a letter?
If he were qualified for the loan.
We would, yeah. We would change the ordinance if he qualified.
Okay. Yeah, the thing with that is, is that I think you can give a letter, basically just stating that you intend to do so. But the one thing I did want to at least talk to Adam about real quick, you guys. Sorry, Adam. I know you've been running the show the entire time and I'm sorry for not speaking up. I just wanted to see how it was going to pan out for a second. Did he look into actually purchasing another acre at all, or has that been discussed with you in any capacity?
Yeah, so I called him after I talked to you and he did talk, he did speak of purchasing either half or all of lot 14, because as of correct, as of right now, he is 6,435 square feet shy of a one-acre lot. Of course, needed to turn this into a CP area. That's correct. So his actual lot only has to be 17,000 by under square feet. But to actually turn this into a CP area, he does need a one acre to do so.
Unless, unless we.
And, yeah, I mean, he did say that if you guys were on board, he would definitely purchase either half or all of lot 14's land to make that work.
Okay. Um, yeah, the letter would be fine. I was, the reason I say that is, is if we start giving out different zoning amendments for something that's 6,000 to 7,000 feet off, then, I mean, the possibility of this being, you know, basically snowballing within the city as people come in to ask for different mapping amendments could actually end up being a problem. And then they would actually have precedent as to us amending something that isn't within the minimum. So I'm fine with the letter. And that way, if he can move forward with that and he can purchase another lot, I don't see why that would be a, why that would be a problem. I think honestly, and the other thing is, is you guys, is he can amend the map for the basic general welfare of the city, the map, the zone map, excuse me. And, I mean, by definition, obviously, if it's a gym would be something that is within the city's welfare. It's good for the people, obviously, so, and for business around the city.
So we need to table this until next meeting, contingent on his response to the letter?
The city's gonna write a letter right now. That's where we stand. We're gonna write a letter and table this until next meeting. If you want to let Mr. Foy know.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam.
Goodbye.
Under Mayor Council report, South Summit Park, no parking.
I, uh, I actually, clerk Agger, he was discussing this issue on South Summit with a concerned citizen on Class Friday or Thursday or something like that. And, uh, he has ties to the Episcopal Church. And he's just concerned about the fact that we made that, that part of the block no parking zone. He was curious if we could maybe make it no parking during business hours from 6:00 in the morning until 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening on weekdays. And then maybe see if, um, you know, we could make it open on weekends as well, so people park there. His deal was when they have their Christmas program and times that the church is really busy, they need that overflow parking there.
There's gonna be having a dinner on a Tuesday evening though. So no place to park. What, Greg and I have to Tuesday.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're talking with, is the dinner after business hours?
Well, it's the start of my class.
Can we move to sign up the street?
Well, Greg and I talked about having an enter-only and an exit-only and only putting like a car lane where it's no parking with a yellow and.
Was showing us that too.
So if we enter only where their door to go in is, and then they would exit between the parking lot and the church. And then there'd be like a little bit of a yellow and a little bit of a yellow. So they have enough to view vehicles coming and going. So even on weekends, the whole time you're doing that? That was, that was something that we talked about.
That opens up a lot more street analysis.
Yeah, I know. Not a lot, but if they do an enter-only. Well, no, it would open up. How many spots did we count?
About three, four.
Yeah, so it would open up.
Three, three, four.
So when you enter in, so because there's that hill and a lot of people have issues with seeing if anybody's coming up that hill. So that would be enter only and then they would exit where it's more.
Up at the church.
Up at the church. Where the alley, yeah. So they would exit only from there. And then there would be the yellow lines to make sure the ladder. That they still, their cars don't park into a space to view, but then that opens up all from here. But I know they've contacted chief this.
I hope we do that.
Would you rather move or look to times of operations as well? I'm not sure how that's.
That's gonna be a big sign to have to explain it to everybody.
We have the exit and, and it's only car lane. So we have those. And then some pink. Scratch out that, well, just put another note.
Even if we just listed it, listed it Monday through Friday, no parking at these little slots. That open up for the weekends, the church and special occasions. Typically, the ordinances state half a block or a full block there instead of just a portion of the half a block. Keep it simple. That's probably what you want to do is having no parking for the half a block or we can enter so that we can take the quarters back. There is language in the ordinances stating how far back we need to be from driveway.
And that was, um, really we thought would be the best and optimal space.
So we would just make the area open for parking then?
With the exits and the exits as control the flow of traffic to give them better view, uh, near the exit. The exit on the south side.
And it would be yellow in front of the doorway because of how that hill and cars and how close.
It is, that's.
We've seen a lot, I've seen kids come out and go around the collar and from the street and.
And it's close.
Yeah, and the cars swerves and somebody's coming, yeah. So we.
But we've got them kind of used to going into the parking lot now, the bigger.
Yes, but we don't have that mention only as well.
No, no, I know, but they're kind of used to going in.
Yeah. But that's what we were thinking, yeah.
It'd be wise to have the street and alley committee, committee can meet and discuss this and bring back options, because I hate to just go in and all give them over this here and say, okay, now we're gonna switch it to just this parking here and then two weeks later, someone else comes in and doesn't like that piece of it and they want us to switch something else. So I'd like to have like an option, leave it at this one now. Option two, look at doing the additional parking from different hours. Option three, lay these options out for all of us so we can see what those plans could be and how that's gonna fit. Instead of just bringing everything to a council meeting and we decide it right on the council meeting. Then we're back to, oh, someone else is mad because can't do this. I'd like to have a little bit of time to look at those options.
So that's exactly what happened is we, uh, we made a decision.
Right.
Um, in the spirit of public safety and then now there's a lot of different factors that are involved.
But they are gonna need some parking in the fifth.
You know, all the churches face that same dealing almost that we faced seven years ago with the.
All the churches.
So we need to table this until next meeting?
I would, I would like to see it through the committee and then.
I withdraw my motion.
So we'll, we'll do that. Okay, um, moving on to Mayor Council report, chapter fifty-six permit.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, we were able to, uh, meet with, uh, Chief Chuck Bowles and, uh, and Sheriff Brian Bollard, uh, last week to discuss the chapter fifty-six permit, which is, uh, uh, the lethal removal of deer within city limits. Um, I thought it was a good meeting. Uh, we, uh, uh, Chief Bowles was gonna write up a work plan and turn it into, uh, biologist Sandrini with Wyoming Game and Fish, um, uh, and, um, that's all I really have to report. I just wanted to see where you were at, Chief.
Uh, I've talked to Joe a few times, um, in reference to that. So we're, I think we're getting a little closer to getting the permit sent off, so.
Okay, um, and then did you find out from, uh, Joe if there was any, uh, if we needed to make any sort of, uh, motion for the lethal removal or?
He, he said it was not, um, required to have a resolution for that. But he said he would suggest that we do, do that.
Okay, so, I mean, I've been on the council for years, but Dublin, do you need to help us put together a resolution for the, uh, lethal removal of deer, uh, per chapter fifty-six?
Okay, I can do that as, um, you guys said that you had already turned in some of the paperwork, correct?
Oh, the chief's. The chief's working on that right now.
Okay.
But it should be ready by next council meeting, Chief.
I would believe so, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, you guys can just get with me on that and, um, I can drop a resolution, basically stating what the purpose and everything else is just so we can have a look at it before and then we can get it moving.
Um, I also thought that this was a good, uh, this was a good project that the county and the city were working on together. I, I like to see the county and city working together. Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I have nothing further unless the chief has.
Any other questions for regarding chapter fifty-six? Okay, um, Mayor Council report, number four, standing committee appointments for two thousand twenty-three. Um, effective January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. The complete, the police committee will be Darren Downs, Don Stevenson, and Ann McCauley. Personnel finance committee, Darren Downs, Ann McCauley, Don Stevenson. Water, sewer, fire, Don Stevenson, Tyrell Owens, Tom Boss. Street alleys buildings committee, Darren Downs, John Butts, Tom Boss. Sanitation committee, or sanitation, community appearance committee is Ann McCauley, John Butts, Darren Downs. Park cemetery recreational committee is John Butts, uh, Tyrell Owens, Ann McCauley. And land committee is all council as needed. And with that, um, do we want to set dates for the, um, park cemetery and recreation committee to meet, um, regarding, um, yes, Mrs. Pudd? And the, um, streets committee? Would we like to find a date that works now or would you guys like to email each other and?
I'm comfortable setting a date, Madam.
Okay.
Pretty flexible, so whenever I'm, I'm pleased with.
Okay, so for, um, cemetery, um, Mr. Butts, Mr. Owens, and Ms. McCauley, what dates work for you guys to meet?
I'm pretty flexible.
Um, I think that we're gonna need, um, some guidance probably from Public Works. As far as some of the regulations and everything. So when would be a good time for you?
Anytime. Uh, the only thing we have higher going on right now is February seventh, I believe. Um, we have a trade going on for the KIS.
So can we meet sometime next week, maybe?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm open for dates and time.
Our next meeting is Thursday. So if we wanna revisit this on the sixth, it would have to be before the sixth.
Well, that's what Lisa was talking about next week. So I could do the twenty-fourth, fifth, sixth.
And, and twenty-fourth, Friday, what time? Lunch?
Yeah, I'm, I'm available Monday.
Okay, noon on the twenty-fourth, okay. Thank you.
Are you fine?
I'm on the weight loss challenge right now.
Salads for us all. All right, so cemetery committee's meeting on the twenty-fourth at noon. Um, you guys discuss the place, um, and then what about streets? And that would be, um, Mr. Boss, Mr. Butts, and Mr. Downs.
Twenty-fifth at noon?
That's the retiring people.
Yeah.
I'm on the weight loss program.
Okay, what, what committee is that?
The streets.
Streets.
Streets. I'm on the streets, right?
That, that would work for me too, so. Okay, how about we split it over to do it tomorrow at nine o'clock?
That's long, okay.
About three? Thirty, forty?
Okay, thirty, what time?
No, thirty, don't work.
Thirty.
Nah, yeah, I can't do it on.
You can't do it on first. Friday morning? I think you do it Friday morning? What about?
This is streets committee.
Ten. Nine, nine, ten? Nine's good.
Nine.
Nine. Nine A M. Ready.
All right, so those are set. Moving on to department head reports, um, number one, wish to hold.
Um, your date for the calls we've received, uh, through dispatch is three hundred fifty-five. Um, and breaking those down, seventy-seven of those were for the sheriff's department. Ninety-three for the PD. Twenty-five with the community service officer, two with the city crew. Um, Upton PD had thirty-eight. We got the volunteer fire department had two. Upton ambulance had four. Volunteer, uh, fire department with Newcastle had seven. Weston County Fire District had seventy-three. Newcastle ambulance had thirty-four. That was as of fifteen hundred dollars today's date. I'd also like to bring up, um, and try to get the council's approval to increase wages for nine of my employees. I would like to also, um, have this go forward with new employees that I hire. Um, I wanna maintain and, um, also when we hire, gain quality employees and I think wages, um, go along with that. And Stacy and I have talked, uh, over the current budget and, uh, I think we can find some spots in there where we can move some money around that's not being used and used, uh, for increased wages. So I would like to, um, propose a two dollar an hour raise for each employee.
I would make the motion that we increase the wage for each employee of the police department by two dollars.
I see.
I see. Thank you.
Any, any discussion?
Um, I think the chief has a valid point. Uh, I think that's something that we were looking at for the public works too. Uh, you can't hire quality people if you're not offering them a living wage.
And we definitely can't keep them.
And we want to try to keep and, uh, you know, maintain the police force in our town. So, um, I, I think it's a good idea.
So I'm, so we're all up, uh, employees are now a two dollar raise. And then new employees that come in, they'll just be two more dollars from the starting wage for us.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think it's, uh, a bold move by the chief too, beginning he just got there. Already champion for wages.
I think it's great.
I think it's great too. I like it.
Or coming to the city council and writing one money right off the bat.
Ain't from around here, are you?
Waiting to see what we saw, the money we wanted for that.
Chief, that's a lot of money.
Uh, okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And I guess, uh, we get to clarify that with the twenty next payroll. Yeah, so thirty next payroll. Anything else?
I know.
Any questions for the chief? Uh, moving on to city attorney, Dublin, please.
Um, I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Any questions for city attorney? Okay, moving on to city clerk, treasurer, Stacy.
Just with the rescheduling of the audit, um, we have it tentatively scheduled for the February sixth evening at six o'clock.
Any questions for city clerk? Uh, poll supervisor, Grayson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two, two things. We've received a, an agreement with American Engineering Testing. This agreement is for doing water, water sampling and water monitoring of the current landfill. So it's something we have to do each year to keep up on that. The second one, uh, we're asking for a resolution to be signed for the ARPA grants. I've asked our part-time engineer, Chuck Bartlett, to speak on this.
Mayor, council. Um, my name's Chuck Bartlett. Uh, again, the first grant that we're trying to apply for is for replacement water and sewer line in Seventh Avenue. Again, the total cost of that project is eight hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars, which we will be, uh, matching a sixteen percent of that. So we're going for an eighty-four percent grant from ARPA. And that's seven hundred twenty-four dollars and seven hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, the second project was the, um, replacement sewer main and lift station of inch Duff Avenue. Again, that project is a little more expensive. It's, uh, one thousand, or one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, the grant amount that we're going for is one million, eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Is there any questions from the council?
When, when will these projects start?
Uh, when we get the money. Uh, again, we don't know, we have to have grant applications in, uh, January twenty-third by noon. Uh, and we're not sure whether we'll receive any, uh, problems back.
Still no.
Right.
These are two projects that we can get started right away.
What was, what was the percentage on the second?
It's eighty-four sixteen.
The second one is?
Yes.
So the first one, we would have to have basically a hundred and forty thousand?
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand, of which.
That was rounding up.
Thirty-three thousand, that's already been expended on, uh, that's our cap project, uh, for Seventh Avenue's already been designed. So we can use that for part of our share.
The ARPA grants, they really encouraged us to have shovel-ready projects. By the time they award this, we should be fifty percent through the design of Duff Avenue. We actually sent the Seventh Avenue water main and sewer main replacement, uh, DQ grant in last week, or DQ permit in last week. So we, as soon as we get the money for Alvin and Fine Lines, the permit to construct, we're ready to start it. The Duff Avenue takes a little more time. They're largely currently working on the last for that, so. And the Seventh Avenue one was an eighty-five fifteen?
Eighty-four sixteen. 84.16.
For both of them, 84.16, right?
Yes.
And the permits, I guess they don't list in there what the total project cost would be and what the city's putting in on that 16%?
That could run several other pages of our resolution.
Okay, I just wanna be sure, I guess, how, how do we know what our fees could be when I'm looking at the document?
Is it in the budget?
Okay. For the Duff Avenue replacement, the 16% would be $192,164. And for the Seventh Avenue, since we already paid for the engineering, it'd be $104,379.
And I just wanted to be sure that somewhere in the document that shows what the city is basically putting in for matching portion of that. These are projects that we've been working on for several years, that Duff Avenue has been one, that's been plaguing us for many years. So is Seventh Avenue with the main breaks that we've had on there. Me and I would make a motion that these are things that we need to move forward with and ARPA grants one that's gonna get us there, hopefully. And, you know, we won't know until we put in the grants one to see what we get, so I'd make a motion that we support Resolution 2 and Resolution 3.
Second.
Do you want a motion in the second and any further discussion?
I agree with Councilman Steve, having worked in Public Works, those are pretty high priority projects and it would be good to get a lion's share of the money and grant.
Duff Avenue Sewer, Sewer Main, or Sewer Lift Station, we're working on that project. If we start to show its age since 1954.
Having worked in the lift station many times and that being one of the items that new hires are threatened with, I, I think that it would be a great plan to have a new facility and, and safer too.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Does time for you?
One other question is we do have to prioritize the three ARPA grants that are gonna go in to the city. We've got these two grants and then we've got the Heritage Park grant. We will need to, or I should say the council will need to prioritize the projects. And since I was born in 1954, I know how that lift station feels.
Should we prioritize this now?
That's, you know, something that we need to discuss on how we prioritize them. You know, I'm all for the Heritage Park, you know, when we start looking at the $3 million, $4 million price tag of that one. And if I'm looking at trying to fix our infrastructure, I'm gonna lean more towards fixing the infrastructure of the city over, I do want the, to see that part going place.
But that doesn't mean we're not doing it, right? There could be other.
There could be other funding sources.
You know, if we're having to put priorities to this, in my mind, I think names are gonna have to come back.
Which, which one of these is?
Duff Avenue probably.
That lift station pays.
Yeah. It's 132 homes, we will be tying the great school into it and two other homes, we're making $550 to build.
So Resolution number three will be top priority, Resolution number two will be second, and I don't know if the Heritage Park will be number one? Yeah, I'm not sure the number of Heritage Park, I think it's for Heritage number one, if we keep that in mind. Are we all agreeing with?
That's a good idea.
Clarification?
Heritage Park doesn't have, ever created.
I don't know. And it doesn't mean that we're gonna quit. It's a looking at that. Because I think.
Clarification? Just for the video, it's Duff Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Heritage Park in order. Okay.
So Resolution 3 is first priority, Resolution 2 is second, and Resolution 1 is third.
We're going some and all, wait.
You got your numbers straight.
I'd like to make a statement too about our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is, are the unseen apertances and pipes that everybody expects to work. They, they want their water to come on when they turn on the tap and they want their sewage to go away when they flush their toilets. And ours has been severely neglected through the years. So I think this is a positive step towards fixing things that are amenities of our town, so.
We're working on it. Heather, what's there, is there any questions?
Everything was pretty straightforward this time today. Do we have any questions?
Anyone else have questions for the next, next report?
And did we make, need to make a decision on the American Testing, one that they brought forward on the proposal for the 18,000 to 23,000 proposal?
For the water testing?
It's the monitor and water testing.
How does that go with past things that we've made?
It's right in the same, same area. There's a small increase, I think it was, I might say 6% at the most.
Are they the same people who've been doing it?
Yep. And it's a requirement of the EQ permit. In that case, I'm gonna make that motion then to accept the work plan and cost estimate for the 2023 semi-annual environmental monitoring. That was anticipated cost of $18,615.36 to potential of $23,347.07.
Second.
Maybe we have a moment, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Anything else?
Well, the Cemetery Committee meeting over the vaults. We do have a pretty good portion of the master plan put together, which I have some different concepts. So very, we also like to talk about that and some ordinance changes to meet what we're currently doing versus where our ordinance is. Probably take some longer than the 15 minute discussions.
Any Standing Committee reports? Any other business?
I have something, ma'am, ma'am. I had a concerned citizen contact me in regard to the ordinance that we passed restricting the parking of campers and trailers on city streets during the winter timeframe. There is a, there is a camper that has been parked at 112 Cheyenne Avenue. I guess it's causing a hazard, there's snow and ice that's been building up in the area. I guess the CSO has been unable to contact the individual. But the, the folks that contacted me said that it's a hazard and it is parked there in violation of our ordinance. So I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention and then see what we can do about it.
I can look at that.
Okay, yeah, 112 Cheyenne Avenue. That's all we have.
Anybody else?
Madam, ma'am, I have one thing I wanted to mention to the council and see what they think about it. On it, on these certificates that we give out and the people that come and they get their certificate, I, I would like to see that brought up and be a little bit more promotional and like we take a picture, make sure it gets into the paper and we, we write up a little tidbit about their business, maybe, do we have a Facebook page? And we can get it on a Facebook page and make this a little bit bigger deal and get us some good PR. Just like that, and I, and I don't need a, you know, vote on it or anything, I just wanted to see what you guys thought about that. The other thing I'd like to do is start looking at Employee of the Month and, and do something like buy, buy one of our employees each month a, a dinner somewhere, that may be at the restaurant out here at West Town, or East Town. Anyway, but I, I'd like to see us doing and reaching out and getting some good PR. And that's a couple ideas that we might be able to do.
In line with the certificate of recognition, I am offering my services for photography on that for the city councils. If I am given forewarning, because I don't bring my camera every time here.
I do think that is a very good.
I'm not sure when this shit got brought up or not, but Mr. Barry Peterson put his application in for the planning commission. And I guess he came to the planning commission at the last meeting and the planning commission, I guess, is recommending to the council to hang him onto their, um, chain.
I would move that we accept Barry Peterson on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second, yeah.
Do you have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
I just think we should know that our time is up and that he was, I mean, not that that's why, but.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
The, you ran the ad again, didn't you?
You ran, you ran two weeks.
You ran it, but so after the resignation of the last board member, you ran it again for two weeks? Okay, and there were no other applicants? So, those of you watching out in YouTube land, there's a vacancy on the Planning, Zoning Commission. So please apply, good civic duty.
The newsletter will charge you for that ad, the later date.
Do we have a motion to leave regular session, enter into executive session, planning session 16-4-405A double I personnel and 16-4-405A triple I radiation.
So?
Second. Do you have a motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, go into executive session at 8:02. Thank you, everyone.